I'll entertain a motion to resume the meeting.
Make a motion?
I need a motion. The motion's been made. Is there a second? Second it, second, somebody second it. Motion's been made and seconded to resume the meeting. Court Golick will call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Ricles.
Yes.
Orpil.
Yes. Motion carries, eight in favor, one absent. Next item on the agenda. New and unfinished business. New and unfinished business. Nobody has any new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. You have three minutes to say whatever you want. I hope we can refrain from the applause so we can get through this list.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
There's a sign on the wall that there are no apps in the council members. I request everyone to mute their app.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First person on the list, and please state your name and your address. Andrea Centers. Andrea Centers. Next item, next person on the list is Joseph Hines. Are there, is there a microphone down there for them to speak?
There is, Councilman. Yeah, I've asked them to unmute.
Turning it into a Purdue is.
Microphone has been unmuted.
Very well. But at least they don't use toxic chemicals. And so he's got a lot better, they have a lot better chance to, to survive.
They, it looks like they just went back on mute down there. I'm asking them to unmute again.
They can, they're welcome to come up. That's what we took the five-minute break for. Was that it from Andrea Centers? Was that everything?
Their conversation.
Is anyone down here?
I think everyone who, who came upstairs wants to speak. The people down here are content with being down here.
Did you sign up for public expression? Did you? No one down here is to talk.
Okay, they do not want to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on a second. 10 seconds, we'll get this going. So is there a, nobody downstairs, it's my understanding, nobody downstairs wants to speak. So is Joseph Hines up here? Is Joseph Hines up here? They just said, nobody downstairs wants to speak. Okay, the next one on the list is. I think it's Elaine Fuentes. Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Elvia Fuentes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elvia Fuentes. My address is 3238 176th Place, Hammond.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for the record. Thank you. Just for the record, I would like, I want to firmly restate that the protest against the governance part railroad overpass project have the support of the Hammond and Hessville community. And it should go down in the history from the moment it was announced back in 2017 to the present time as a community movement in the protection and conservation of the Briar East Dune in Hessville. Thank you.
Next side, next person to speak is Ken Rosick. Ken Rosick's still here. Next person to speak is Paula Taylor. Paula Taylor's still here. Next person to speak is Mary Lavanne.
Mary Lavanne, 7406 Jackson Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. A 96-year resident of Hammond. And I, I thoroughly hope that we can save Briar East Woods. Whatever you do, conserve that dunes. It's so important. I hate to lose it, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Next person on the list is David Matur, or Dave Matura. Hang on one second, let me get this right. Go for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dave Matura, 2130 Superior Avenue, Whiting, Hammond, Indiana. It's interesting because I had my, my thoughts written down and what I was going to say, and then I listened to the mayor talk, and boy, he just threw me for a loop because he, he just found things amazing that, what, what would these people be doing here? Why, why do these people have genuine concerns? Why would they come before their city council? Why would people from out of the city have concerns? Well, because it's bigger than just the city. It's about our environment. We talk about the quality of life. We talk about sewer water going to the rivers, which the mayor is, he's all for it. So what, what do we mean? We mean Gibson Woods. Gibson Woods is green. Gibson Woods has not been touched by any, I'm sorry, Briar East Woods has not been touched by anyone. It's there to absorb the rainwater. It's there to absorb the CO2. It's there to produce oxygen. It's there for the health of the residents, both in the city and outside of the city. I've had people argue with me, oh, there's studies that you need to develop this, you need to develop that. All the periodicals and magazines I read says you need green space for the health and quality of your citizenship. This is someplace that people in the city can go and relax, see nature, see biodiversity. By the way, oh, we've lost 30% of our bird population. I wonder why? Well, we're going to cut 30% of the trees down. Oh, but we'll plant them somewhere else on some parkway. You know what? The city of Hammond planted trees by my house along the Clarkfield George Lake bike path. They planted eight trees. Three years later, two are alive.
You got one more minute, I'm sorry, that, that goes up, why not?
So. Again, I, I ask you, you already voted, so it's, it's sort of in, in the rearview mirror, but the mayor said, you know, if we don't get this bridge, the next generation's going to say, what were they thinking? No, no, no. The next generation's going to say, what were they thinking? They cut down our trees, they cut down our woods, they took away the quality of life. Oh, so that I wouldn't be inconvenienced by a train. So that's what the legacy's going to be. Not that you built the bridge, but that you robbed the future generations of something that has been there, time immortal. I would say, please don't vote for the, for the bridge, but you know where I stand. Please don't vote for the bridge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since I saw some people come in, is Andrea Jo Centers here?
Does it matter?
It don't matter.
Andrea Jo Centers, 6804 Idaho Avenue, Hammond. Not only all of the other outside issues that everybody else is bringing up. I recalled having that seven inches of rain in seven minutes, and that water runs north, and all the water that the dunes absorb make me wonder, because I'm on that first block, am I going to have to get flood insurance now? Also, because that's going to have nothing to absorb the water. And where will the animals be that will be displaced from having to be out of their homes? And that really comes home to me because I, I do love the animals, and I do enjoy walking my dogs in those parks. And I've met a lot of people there that I have not been able to because, as I said, I am disabled, and it's hard for me to get to a place where they have a nature thing. And I didn't understand why we couldn't just turn that into like what Sandridge Nature Center did and make it a learning thing for the kids and the adults alike coming in and have a flyer in the tourist place when people park in there to where they can come and enjoy some fishing or other activities that people do on the beach. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Joseph Hines. I'm having a fit with this clock, hang on a second. You're in. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Council, my name is Joseph Hines. I live at 703 114th Street in Robertsdale. The illusion of progress. Tonight, Hammond City Hall stages its spectacle called "A Parkway." But let's be clear, this isn't infrastructure. It's a wrecking ball aimed, aimed at Briar East Woods, a 4, 4,700-year-old ecosystem that survived glaciers, industrialization, only to be bulldozed for what we all know is going to be luxury subdivisions. And now here we have a new data center coming up on our lake shore, right by the bird sanctuary. How does our council respond to a 2,000 petition signature demanding transparency? By barricading democracy? Tonight, they've stacked City Hall with cronies, shoved dissenters into a basement, and called it a public meeting. This isn't governance, it's a coup against the people. Council members, you claim this overpass will ease train delays, yet your own FOIA release maps reveal the truth. 68 residential lots and commercial zones carved into the heart of our ancient dunes. Cheaper fixes, like elevated tracks even, were dismissed. But why? Because your donors, your developers crave McMansions, not solutions for working families. You starve our parks, label them blight, then sell the corpse to the highest bidder. Meanwhile, you siphon funds into vanity projects while closing the Woodmar YMCA, leaving families there without community anchors. You're torching 32 acres of black oak savanna, red-tailed hawks nest, and a 4,700-year-old dune ridge, all to build a future where only the wealthy breathe clean air. Too busy rubber stamping utility hikes to fight for the people who elected them. But we see your game, we, you think locking us in basements and staging sham hearings will keep us docile. The Hessville Dune Dusters, 1,700 strong, have hauled out tires, furniture, and corporate trash to reclaim this land and will haul out your corruption too. When your grandchildren ask why a 4,700-year-old shoreline died for a traffic shortcut, what will you say?
Thank you. Paula Taylor. Please state your name and address.
My name is Paula Taylor, 7434 Magoon Avenue in Hammond. I'm really new to this. I, I actually didn't know that we had this beautiful area and I was familiar with Gibson Woods, but progress, if you're not breathing, if you don't have the oxygen that is supplied by the trees or the carbon dioxide that takes, is taken up by the plants. These are big trees. You cannot just say, we'll plant some more trees. These are trees that are older than I, and I'm one of the, I grew up in the 50s in the neighborhood, right down the street. And we had nature, wildlife. I'm old enough to remember insects that are no longer. I remember butterflies everywhere. We'd see a cabbage butterfly, and say, oh, it's just a cabbage butterfly. Now I think, oh, my gosh, there's a butterfly. And so, and I raise butterflies. Do I release them here? I find them here, I live here, I live in Woodmar. Do I release them in Hammond? I don't think they're going to have a real good chance here. So where do I go? I go to Valparaiso, to the arboretum, the one that Purdue owns now. It's called Gabbit, it used to be Tall Tree. Now they've turned this into a win-win situation. Win-win because they've gone there. The attendance has increased. They have courses, they have seminars, they have studies. And the people who live there, they have oxygen. Can you replace those trees that have been there forevermore? And so, it is a thought. I grew up in Hammond, downtown Hammond. Yeah, they put a bridge up, guess what? Everyone went to Illinois and started shopping at this shopping center by the time that bridge was up there. You see, time goes on. People progress. Yes, business must go onward. But if we can live with it and be healthier as a consequence, that is what matters.
Thank you. Ken Rosick, is Ken Rosick here? Is Ken Rosick here? Okay, that's twice I've called him. Daphne Reyes, Reyes. Daphne Reyes. Lizette Montanez.
Good evening, elected officials.
Please state your name and your address.
Lizette Montanez, 1940 Warwick Avenue, Whiting, Robertsdale, Hammond. It's incomprehensible what just happened here, a vote, eight yeses. We live in an industrial strip. I particularly live by the BP cargo. I'm getting hit from all directions. They get tax breaks, though. And we smell, everything is foul around here these days. You would destroy a wooded area that has thousands of living organisms there with no voice, that cannot speak something beautiful. Look at it from aerial view. We elected you, some of us in the room, and we count on you not to sit there and do someone else's bidding. This bridge might be funded, state, some federal, but it is in fact funded by Hammond, all of Hammond, not just. Hessville should have a say. And we have people here from other cities. We have Illinois reporting on the safety issue for those children that are jumping those trains. And that's not going to end. You guys are not going to be well-known for something good. This is not good. I particularly believe in God and the aerial view. Okay, right here, that he must see, that you guys would be so destructive. You've got a whole Lower Rocks movement going on here, and they want to save trees, something good, something my Lord would want us to preserve. And you guys would sit here and play this monopoly. What is it for? What good is coming from this? In fact, you would talk about people that are sitting here and call, or not you, but they were called names. And I happen to have worked for Local 399, a union that taught us to represent protest. We fight for what's right, and they have a voice. They are community. You are here to represent them and listen to them, not sit there and play on your phone. And it's some of your last days here because they will be voting you out. Thank you.
Can we control this? Next up, Cindy Murphy. Time's up, you missed it.
Cindy Murphy, 6838 Colorado. I'd like to thank the council for staying here late and making sure everybody that wanted to be heard could be heard. And I'm going to piggyback on something that someone said earlier. Where are the butterflies? Specifically, I want to say, where are the bumblebees? So I grow verbena in front of my office, and it's only about two miles maybe away from there. I didn't see one bumblebee this summer, not one. So what we need to do with this project, and it's a great project, and I'm here for it. I live in Hessville. We need health and safety. I'm not going to go over it again because you guys have all heard it. You get it. You want to put in the infrastructure improvements in my area and improve the quality of life. Well, I want your great project to become excellent. So the way to do that is being in there and planting the native plants, bringing back our pollinators. So Indot had this big plan out there, and I see grass, a tree here or there, retention ponds. No, Council, I'm going to ask you, tell them, don't plant any of that Kentucky blue. You want to plant prairie mix. And not just any prairie mix, you want early, mid, and late summer. So our pollinators have food the whole time. I heard in another time someone saying, we've got one black oak. That happens to be my favorite tree, black oak. I don't want to see one black oak there. You need a stand of black oak. Again, food for the animals. People talk about the hawks, well, you need the mice, the voles, the squirrels for those. This is about habitat restoration. And when you start restoring the habitat, it improves the quality of life because those butterflies will come back, the hummingbirds are going to come back. We're going to hopefully see the bumblebees come back. So I'm going to ask you, Council, make this an excellent project. Put some water sources in there. Let's see some community gardens. Oxbo Park, you did an excellent job. You restored a wetland. Let this be a restoration project here in Hessville and improve the quality of life. So I know this stuff is expensive, so I'm asking you to ask Indot, what is the money they've got into it? We may have to do like a five-year plan and say, hey, these retention ponds, let's make them water gardens at some point, but you can't do it all at once. So I need the people behind me who are saying, no, this is terrible, don't take any trees down, to stand up and say, we're going to restore this. We're going to restore the habitat, and we're going to make this an excellent project, which is going to be for the residents in Hessville for years on forward. Thank you.
I don't know, I can't do that. I can't really read this name. Is somebody here from 3311 176th? Leave it to me, I got the clock set all wrong, by the way.
My name is Joyce.
Hang on one second. Go for it.
And I live at 3311 176th Street, Hammond, Indiana. With the destruction of the dunes, I think it is wrong. You're destroying history. Everybody in the city of Hammond knows how to get around a train. I know for a fact that if you hear that where I am at, I hit 8094, I go straight down Klein Avenue. You know how to do this. You were born and raised in this city. The next issue is, you did a wonderful job at Oxbo Park. We have eagles. The other day, I actually watched two juveniles down at Dowling Park. You want the expansion? Save the dunes. Where are they going to go? Are you going to put up walls for them and say, you only get this section? This is what we give you? Which is wrong. Our nature is vital to us. When's the last time that any one of you see a salamander at your house? Oh, good for you, but I haven't seen one in over 20 years, plus. Devote the time and energy to our dunes because if you don't take time to listen to your people, you will not be sitting in here any longer.
Hannah Watts. Give me one second, please.
My name is Hannah Watts. I live at 7138 Lindberg in Hammond, Indiana, 46323. My late grandfather was a fiscal council member. Some of you might have even known him, Clifford Watts. I will make this brief and direct. I am a lifelong resident of Hammond. I was a 21-year resident of Hessville until my late mother passed, who herself was a lifelong resident of Hammond. My grandparents were a lifelong resident of Hammond. I live in the house that my great-grandparents built in this city. When I think about my future, I want to stay in Hammond. But when I hear McDermott say that people will be laughing at, at them, at laughing at you if you do not take this decision, I think about what I'm going to tell my children when they have no breathable air in this city. When I can't recommend that they stay here in the long term, when I can't even recommend myself staying in here in the long term. And the absolute disregard and disrespect that I am seeing right now from my constituents right now, especially you, Councilwoman Vincennes, who has been playing on your phone and staring daggers at every person who has walked up to this pulpit today. I am disgusted by the people that I have chosen to vote into here. I will say this. I would love to raise my children in this city because there are a lot of things that I love about this city and I love about Northwest Indiana. And I think about our neighbors to the east and the kind of tourism they've gotten from their natural resources and not expanding on that and just seeing short-sighted capital gains like the rest of this godforsaken country right now that is cutting down on our ecosystem and just whatever. And it makes me think you don't care. I'm going to outlive all of you, and I will still be here when you are all long gone. And I, my children, my grandchildren, God forbid I'm able to have grandchildren, will not look kindly on this decision. Thank you.
Ken Davidson. Ken Davidson. Kelly Helleck. Kelly Helleck. Okay. Is this Judy Fraser? Judy Fraser? Mary Trevino? Mary Trevino? Lisa, I want to say Steyankovich, maybe? Is that right? No? Lisa Steyankovich. Mary Scallions? Does that sound right? I tried. I stated before I went to Gabbit and never passed an English class. How do you pronounce your last name?
Shones.
I was close.
It rhymes with Jones, yeah. Okay, hi. Hi, my name is Mary Shones, and I live at 3945 Wabash Avenue in Hammond. And while I am not against bridges and I am not against train delays, nobody likes to be stuck by trains. This isn't about a train delay. This is a power grab because the city wants to build fancy new houses in old. This is a power grab because the city wants to build fancy new houses in old growth forests. And that's what it's all about. And it's being disguised as this other thing. Why is it that creatures who can't speak for themselves are surrounded by people who insist that if they could speak, they would want to be killed or cut down? Trees and animals always bear the burden and the brunt of our human greed. Briar East Woods has been around here 2,000 years before the birth of Christ. And 2,000 years after his death, we are debating, or we had debated, well, debated, on whether to get rid of something that's really special in the city. And when the trees are gone and that part, and the basements in Hessville start filling with water because we got rid of our natural flood abatement systems, well, we can just wait another 4,000 years for it to recover. We are creative people. We can do better than this. You know, God knows, we can put it, we can, we can put an overpass over so many other places in this city. You know, God knows we have enough empty giant parking lots around here that we can put an overpass over. But instead, we're putting it over something really nice in this city. And I'm really sorry that you got, that you got rid of it. You got rid of this. And the trees that will be replanted, I've seen some of the replanning, you know, one of, somebody else can comment. Like when you go out to Wolf Lake, I've seen like the replanning of trees. They need to be replanted again. We can do better. And hopefully, one day, we will do. Thank you.
Next up, Mike Oles. Mike Oles. O-L-E-S. Next up. Is it Michaela Spangenberg? Say that again, I'm sorry.
I'm amazed you can make out my handwriting that well. That's very impressive.
Thank you.
I think that's the most impressive thing I've seen tonight.
You're on.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Dr. Michaela Spangenberg. I live at 1619 West 20th Avenue, Gary, Indiana. And I say that without any fear or shame or endorsement of strange propaganda about terrible things we're allegedly trying to do to you guys. Gary Education Coalition also. A good deed married to a harmful deed is not a good deed. You have children being hit by cars at an increasing rate because the individuals who sought the favor of certain individuals in this city, who were part of the last school administration, maybe part of the last board, functionally terminated your transportation for your youngest and most vulnerable children. And immediately, members of your community came forth and appealed to you and to your executive branch and your administration and all the folks for help to address this to any way, shape, or form, just to save lives. That help has not been meaningfully forthcoming. And instead, we're now seeing a small carrot of help, maybe like a baby carrot, being attached to something that clearly many people in your community do not want. Unity is not about conformity. Unity is about consensus building, and that means everybody. It doesn't mean doing just the bidding of one person, or nine people, or 10 people, or 700, or 25,000. It means your whole city of roughly 70,000 people. 76, actually. Yes, thank you for the correction. 76 and change, or 75, or 79. You have a lot of people. They're not being represented. And we still live, thankfully for now, and we should continue to continue to fight, to live in a situation in which we have the right to vote and we have the ability to participate in what we term a representative democracy. I get the sense that your voters are getting tired. The facade of helplessness, of powerlessness wears thin when the whole job of this governing body is to act as a check and balance, not an enabler. And you're well within your rights if you discover down the line that something legally or financially is not right. You're well within your rights procedurally and legally to revisit this issue. And I encourage you to. Because one of the most disturbing things I witnessed tonight was the fact that we had unanswered questions about funding. Thanks.
TJ. TJ, is it Gerding-Gerting? I tried. Let me get the clock right, okay?
Oh, no, yeah.
Go for it.
Gerthig.
Thank you.
Well, that was kind of disappointing. But, you know, the parade was fun, so. I wanted to say, I wanted to give my best wishes to Katrina. I know she fell down a flight of stairs with the ice, and I know she's hurting. So I hope, I hope she didn't get a headache from getting yelled at for that. But, yeah, so I made this for you guys. I'm glad it made it out to you technically before the vote. Thank you for reading it out. I wonder, I guess. I wonder if the, if the city administration had been forthcoming to you guys about this project and told you, all right, guys, we have, we have several options, but we have one option where we go through the forest, and then we also do a pedestrian bridge on Grand Avenue. It'll cost us $4.5 million. You know, because the pedestrian bridge costs $7 million. The overpass that Indot researched on the same road costs $8 million. Can you imagine if we had just gone with that? I mean, how simple this would be? And when you guys voted to approve the, the funding for this, Al, you're off the hook for that, but the rest of you, I mean, how many, how many questions were asked? Did you guys know about the alternatives? Have you guys asked, since you guys just got funding for the pedestrian bridge, have you guys asked if it could be transferred to a bridge that costs just $1 million more on the same road? That would solve the emergency transportation? That would solve kids walking to school? That would solve people getting blocked by trains on the way to work? And then you'd be able to make a park out of a 4,300-year-old dune? So. I don't know. I guess, you know, I'm kind of disillusioned because a lot of you personally cheered me on that, you know, we're doing the right thing and keep on going. And a lot of the other people in the group said, TJ, they're playing you, TJ, they're fooling you, TJ, don't believe them. And, and I really stuck up for you guys. I was like, no, they just, they just want more facts on the project. No, they're actually listening to us when we're doing public expression. And I mean. I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sandy, I can't read the last name from Hobart. Is that? O'Brien?
Sandy O'Brien, 5500 South Liverpool in Hobart, Indiana. And I am here because I'm always in favor of saving land for nature, and I've been doing it my whole life. And people in Hobart appreciate all the land that's been saved for nature preserves in Hobart. And it actually, I think, improves the quality of life in Hobart enough that it's been worth doing. You know, that's, quality of life is something really important. And we're not, you can't make dunes like the dunes at the Briar East Wood Dunes. And there's wetland attached to the dunes and in the same path that would be destructed by the, the bridge plan. But all this, there are alternatives. It makes a lot of sense to just rethink and redo the project on, on Grand Avenue where it makes more sense. And to save the woods, the oak trees are over 100 years old. You can't get those. You can't plant trees now and get 100 years old trees tomorrow. You got to wait 100 years. And this is a place that can be restored. And I'm a botanist, and they had me come and look at it, and I made a report, which maybe you've seen or not. But it is worthy of saving, and it can be restored so that it has the butterflies and the bumblebees and everything. Right now, it's a little shady, like all places that haven't been managed as nature preserves. You get too many trees and shrubs, and then the ground layer doesn't have sun, and then you don't have flowers. So it can be managed and restored, and it seems to have a big fan base, this wood, so it won't be neglected. So I appreciate you, council, all staying for public comment. I think that's very commendable. Sort of shocking that the mayor doesn't come to city, to public input, but I guess that's the way it was, it is in Hammond. In Hobart, that doesn't happen, as far as I can tell. I've been an activist in Hobart as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Strain? Here we go again. I'll get there. No Kathleen Strain? Joseph Kahn?
My name is Joseph Kahn. I live at 910 Lake Street in Hobart, and I bet you're wondering why somebody from Hobart is coming up here meddling in your affairs. And the reason is this. I've lived in Northwest Indiana all my life. I was born in Gary. I lived out in the Brunswick neighborhood, which is adjacent to Hammond, as you all know. And I lived at 752 Matthew Street, which was just, just a little bit half a block north of 8th Avenue. And if you're familiar with that neighborhood, just south of 8th Avenue is a very long stretch between Burr Street and Clark Road of a, of a dune remnant, just like the one that's at issue here today. And I can tell you, as a boy, my brother and I, who went on to become a dentist, and was into science, and I became a journalist for 38 years, I lived in wonder, running around in those dunes. We made tree forts in the trees, and we had foxholes in the sand, and we went sled riding down those hills. And they were, they were like our, our private park. And so every kid in the neighborhood, and we had lots of kids. We could get a football team up in those days in the baby boom. We had a football game up, two sides, 11 sides in one block. So I, obviously, I'm in favor of you guys saving this, this area. I don't think you really realize, because you're all older, the wonder in a boy playing in nature that way, so close to home. So I know the die is cast. I sat downstairs and listened. But if you had an opportunity to rethink your position on this, or you have any other opportunities like this, I'd like you to think about the children in this community being able to roam free in a woods close to their home. And I, one, appreciate you taking the time to spend here this evening. I covered council meetings all over Northwest Indiana at the county and the city level when I was a reporter for the Post Tribune for 20 years. And I appreciate what you do. I really sincerely do. And I would only suggest that perhaps you might have this public hearing before you vote next time. Thank you very much.
Leslie Pulis. Leslie Pulis. State your name and address, please.
Leslie Pulis, 27, 7230 Olcott in Hammond. I am a clinical psychologist. It has been my life's work to help people in our community surrounding their mental health. When we look across generations of mental health accessibility, when we look across cultural and ethnic lines surrounding mental health, I think we all have to recognize that accessibility and ease of access to natural resources are shown to increase positive mental health outcomes. We've spoken a lot today about finances. We've spoken a lot today about saving nature regarding ecology and longevity. But we have a sincere crisis surrounding mental health across generations, across cultures. We have a really diverse population here in Hammond. And when you actually start looking on a more macro scale, we see that people of color are left out from the nature discussions surrounding mental health, and much of that is because they have been deemed urban. Urban woodland, when people of color have access to it, regularly display lower, lower instances of depression, lower instances of anxiety, lower instances overall surrounding, lower instances surrounding impulsivity. And when we look across the board at what all of those play into, it helps our community in safety overall. Impulsivity, depression, anxiety are highly correlated with violence. And so I think reconsidering or understanding the importance of having a low threshold to access actual nature, this is, the research does not include city parks. It, it, it means nature, not grass. I really hope that you consider what this does generationally for the mental health of our population.
Thank you. Finally, Councilman Higgs. Anthony Higgs.
Anthony Higgs, Level 23 Moore Street, Hammond, Indiana. Former councilman for 16 years, precinct commitment for over 30 years. Devoted and committed to this city. From being a former councilman and seeing the outcries of the constituents of the city, I would advise you all to listen to them. They are crying out. I sat in the seat for the third district councilman for 16 years, and I was victimized on several occasions for things that I didn't do. This shouldn't have happened. Needless to say that the reality of it is, is that the people are crying out. And hear what they're saying. God bless.
Hey, Mr. Rosak, I noticed you stepped back in the room. You want to speak?
Greetings, council. It's nice to see everybody here tonight. One thing I just noticed, somebody is reporting that there's no video of this being held right now. I don't know if that's true or not, but it is? Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments. Somebody mentioned that this is not a bad project, that it's a restoration project. That's not the case. This is a destruction project. Okay? There's not going to be anything left. Hundreds of old oaks are going to come down. 4,700-year-old dunes, a geological gem in the center of our city, is going to be destroyed. Okay, now you say it's for public safety? Let's go back a ways and figure out how this all started. If you remember, it was just going to be a, a bridge to address our public safety issues. Nobody got to see the design for three years, not until we demanded it. And then when it was finally released through a city survey that was very disingenuous, that made it look like a bicycle path going through the woods, everybody realized this was going to do nothing for the public safety issue that they had under grant application, absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing. And then the FRA told us that the mayor knew this project was not going to solve the problem, but they pushed it anyway. Our councilman pushed it. Councilman Raycoz said that there was going to be access for the children. There's no access. Ground zero is Grand Avenue. Okay? Grand Avenue crossing. This bridge is too far, and we all knew it. That's why the pedestrian bridge is going in now. We have tripled the amount of the cost of this project because somebody wanted the development and used an excuse of public safety. Councilman Vines, you said, be careful what you ask for. You know what we asked for? We wanted a solution on Grand Avenue to solve the problem with kids and students, teachers, and emergency vehicles on Grand Avenue. That is what the Federal Railway Administration recommended, but it was rejected by the mayor. Be careful what you ask for. This bridge creates a one-to-two-minute diversion to every single emergency response. So if your ambulance or police officer doesn't show up for another minute or two, be careful what you ask for, because that's exactly what this bridge does. It is a detour. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to turn to most.